Great, well, I'd like to take a minute just to say we've had our testing windows for state testing which has started since we started back from spring break and really the focus has been at the high schools, so it's been great. They did a great job with testing. They're almost done. They finished the big one which was the PSAT and SAT. The SAT was yesterday for our juniors and so we made it through that, so a sigh of relief that that is out and being packaged and shipped off. So that was a good day yesterday to have that completed and the staff did a great job. I also just want to bring awareness around, and this is a celebration, Genesee County has a program that started last year called the Genesee Opportunity. And if you're not familiar with that, I was really excited to learn that any student that attends a Genesee County High School for four years is eligible for a scholarship. And that scholarship for our class of 2017 looks like it's going to be about $700 per student. And so if they've successfully graduated, attended eight semesters, they receive a stipend to go to any post-secondary education, you know, whether it's a training or certificate program, a community college, or a four-year institution. So I'm excited about that. I'm going to be working with our high school to make sure that all of our kids, you know, that are eligible, you know, apply to that because that's a great opportunity that our kids in Genesee County have, so.
Is there any other criteria?
No, if they graduate from a Genesee County High School. The only difference or caveat would be if they transferred in from another school district. They're only eligible for a portion that's prorated, but for students that attend eight semesters all four years, they get the full amount.
How is it funded?
It's funded through, there's some grants, there's a foundation, and it actually is done through the ISD, so. Brittany?
Do they apply at the counseling office or where do they?
Yep, they can apply with their counselor. Actually, they've made it pretty simple. There's actually a website that the kids can go to. They can apply at genesee.org and, or genesee-go.org I should say, and the applications are open now. So any of our seniors, we're going to be working with them to make sure. Our goal is 100% of our students that can get access to those funds because any little bit helps with the rising cost of college right now, so. Pretty excited.
That's great. Anything else?
That's it for me.
Okay. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve.
Could we please separate D, I don't know if you want that after the approval, but...
Yeah, we'll go down to, we can take D and put it in eight as eight C and then nine D. So we'll put it in both of those so we can discuss it at that point.
Okay, thank you.
It's good.
Okay. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of D.
Remove.
Support.
Mike, Brian, any comments or questions? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We opposed. All right, Mr. Manka.
All right, I'd like to take a few minutes and give you some updates just about different things that are happening here in the district and then also around the state. So something, I apologize, I sent you an update today. We were on spring break last week, so I got a little lazy on my board update, but I sent it out today. But I want you to have a copy of this. We're going to do a little legislative update to let you understand a little bit of the picture of where we are legislatively. And so Mr. Heatherton's going to get on and put it up on the screen as well. The first thing I wanted to update you on, I know a few board meetings ago, I had described to you the governor's proposal for his budget proposal. That was the first one out of the gate and it was a very positive budget that was proposed for public education. The way that it works and the process is that all three branches, so you have the executive, the legislative, well, the senate, the house, and the governor's budget essentially, that all three of them will propose. And so all three of them have proposed, and what I put here for you on this document is a summary of the different nuances. It's really just to kind of give you an idea on where the legislature as well as the governor's mindset is at right now. I think one of the things that's exciting is that both the governor and the house agree on a per pupil increase. The one thing that's a little bit concerning is that they're not always aligned on how they would get to funding that. The, the house proposal eliminates the two X formula and so just to make sure everybody understands what that is, the two X formula is for school districts that have been behind, as you know, that not all school districts in Michigan are funded at the same rate. So, for example, in Sports Creek, we get, you know, a little over $7,500 a student. Across the state of Michigan, that's not necessarily the norm. Some get around that amount, but some get much or significantly more. So for school districts that are in that gap that are making just kind of at the bare minimum foundation allowance, they're subject to a two X formula which allows them to kind of catch up, if you will. So as they are behind, they're starting to catch the people that are funded at a higher level. There are some school districts that I'll keep as nameless, they get over $11,000 per student. And so the inequity in spending is something that they've been trying to, funding is something they've been trying to address. So I'm not a fan of the no two X formula. The other things that you can see are there for you for your review. The senate's proposal shows an increase in foundation allowance, but that's coming. The important thing there is that that's at the expense of $100 million from the section 147A, which is our retirement offset account. So the state has allocated, and this was in the governor's budget last year, the state has allocated money to help offset the rising cost of retirement in the Nipser's account. And so the senate's proposing removing that in lieu of giving an increase. So the increase is nice, but sometimes you have to be careful because they'll say there's an increase, but then it's like robbing Peter to pay Paul, if you will. So something I'm concerned about in that senate proposal is that. The one thing that I think is encouraging across all three budgets, which is indicative of something that will likely occur, is that there's an increase in at-risk funding across the board. So I think you'll see those dollars be improved, which is fantastic. So nothing is going to be finalized until May. I just wanted to kind of give you an update on what our current representatives and legislators are thinking. And when they have a fiscal, they have a fiscal conference in May, and once that conference is held, they're going to get some more numbers and they will start to finalize their budgets. And so probably in end of May, early June, we'll get, we'll get what the final numbers are going to be. And I'll share those with you as we get those. There are a couple bills that I think are very interesting that we should be aware of. The first one is Senate Bill 271. This is a bill that's been proposed by Senator Nolenberg. It basically allows schools to begin prior to Labor Day. There's some really weird wording in there about schools not being in session on Monday or Fridays in August, so basically everybody gets four-day weekends. And as you know, the, the way that it works in Lansing, there's a lot of lobbyists. And so there are lobbyists for the tourism industry, there are lobbyists for schools, and so that's, they're going to fall somewhere in there. But just kind of interesting because right now there's statute that prohibits us from starting prior to Labor Day. You know, this right here, of course, would eliminate that. The other thing that I think is important for you to be aware of on the backside of the sheet, there's a, there's a couple bills from the house that deal with the revisions to the Michigan merit curriculum. And ironically, we just brought one of these earlier this winter, or later, just a couple months ago, where we talked about the world language credits and so on and so forth. Essentially, this bill, this set of bills would essentially allow students to take three credits in any of these areas. And so they list out computer science and programming, world language is certainly included, but they're basically making it more flexible for kids to reach the graduation requirements. And so this is, this is a set of bills, not saying that this is going to happen for sure, but it looks like it's got quite a bit of legs. So if that were to happen, we would be having discussions here about how we're going to address that through our graduation requirements and so that you can see that. There's a bill out there dealing with health education and this essentially would replace the health graduation requirement if you were able to complete at least 30 hours of qualifying training provided by OSHA. So you can probably know that there's somebody that introduced this that had a tie to OSHA. But the reality is they're looking at trying to come up with some alternative ways that kids can get that health education credit. And something else that I think is interesting and of note, House Bill 4314 would require that all ISD school board elections would be popular elections. So currently, as you know, we send representatives and local boards vote for them. This bill that's just been introduced would actually require them all to be on the popular election ballot, so. Kind of an interesting bill that's out there. So as I kind of stay updated on legislative activity, those are some things that we may have some further discussions on. I just want to let you know so you can be thinking about those and be aware. Any questions on those updates? I also wanted to share with you a bill that has actually been signed into law. And Mr. Peters, I believe, will be, who's here from Neola, I'll introduce him in a little bit. He'll be talking a little bit about this, I believe. But House Bill 5619 is a, is now statute, it's been signed into law. It's effective August 1st of 2017, and this deals with restorative practices. And so I want to just engage you in a little bit of thought and discussion around this topic. Essentially, what restorative practices are is, schools have been, in a traditional sense, when a student has a behavior infraction, those students are essentially asked to leave through suspension or they're removed from the environment, and so we suspend students. Sometimes this is the best intervention that we have and sometimes it's a necessary intervention. And I certainly don't want you to think that we're going to eliminate that as a possibility of intervention that we might use for students. But the question that is essentially going to have to be asked with this bill moving forward is, what have we done to try and look at different ways to change behavior? And so restorative practices is the vehicle that they do that. Essentially, what that is, is it's helping students understand that when I've harmed somebody, I have to make it right and I have to find a way to fix that problem or I have to resolve the conflict. And so teachers, administrators, several of our people, our staff members are going to be trained on how to address this bill and how, you know, we're going to be able to enact that. And so as a practical example, let's say that there's an assistant principal or an administrator who's meeting with a student. There's going to have to be some checkpoints or some checklist that we consider. Have we considered other avenues prior to just a suspension? Or suspension and also some sort of restorative? And so I think the question that we always should be asking is, is what we're doing for consequence is changing behavior? Because we could have students that are suspended, you know, 10, 20, 30, 40 days and they're going home, they're playing Xbox, they're coming back, and there's not, they're not really, it's not changing the actual behavior that they're engaging in. And so restorative practice gives us a way to bring awareness around the fact that we should be looking at how we change behavior, not just coming in and assigning consequences. And so a little bit of an interesting bill that we're going to be dealing with this summer through training and getting ready for the implementation in the fall. And so there are going to be some policy implications for this, and so we'll be able to talk about that a little bit as well. Any questions on that?
If we'll be able to ask more questions.
Yes, yes. During your discussion time, we'll have some time to get into that. I also want to just bring awareness to the fact that the spring is a busy time. As you know, we're going to have a lot of different awards nights and celebrations and we've got graduation and prom and the list goes on. And so, you know, just kind of be aware of those types of happenings. You know, you're certainly invited to any and all of those things. Couple other quick items. We are, we are into the staffing mode, meaning that we're looking at our numbers of students, we're looking at the numbers of sections and staff members that are needed. And so we're kind of right in the throes of that, which is, you know, can be a stressful time. And we're looking at people who are retiring, we're looking at administrative staffing, all of those types of things to try and right-size ourselves. Little bit of an update, the priests and ministers luncheon, it's on April 27th. I believe Joan is going to reach out to you if she hasn't already. We need to shift that, the initial time was 12 o'clock, actually need to make that 11 o'clock, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
11:00.
11:00. And then the other thing that I would just like to say is, as an observation, I've been in a lot of classrooms over the past couple months and engagement is really, really critical. When you think about what our teachers have to do on a regular basis in engaging our kids in learning, we have some amazing things happening and from all different groups of people, but our teachers, our administrators, they're working very hard. I know that they've taken a lot of hits politically over the last few years, but they're really, really diving in and figuring out, how can I best serve these kids and how can I, how can I engage them in a deeper way? And I've just been very impressed, I was in, out at Elms today, I was at Cyrene today, I've been in a lot of buildings and I'm seeing just a lot of really good work. This is not what some people may be led to believe, like, you know, the Ferris Bueller's Day Off thing where you've got Ben Stein in the room and the kids are nodding off. That is not what's happening here. We have a lot of really good work going on and so it's just exciting. And so is, spring break was kind of refreshing, I think, for our staff. It's exciting to, to see that happening. So very, very proud and excited of our team for the work that they're doing, so.
Quick question too.
Yes.
The meeting there with the priest, what is the objective of that?
Great question. So we have, obviously, we're a service organization. Our churches and faith community is a service organization, they're service organizations. What I'm trying to do is pull everybody together and find out where are some ways that our community has a need that we can work together. And a practical example of that would be, right now, the Methodist and Catholic Church run a food pantry, the food, I think it's called the food basket. And that's a great thing for some of our families that don't have a lot of food, but we have students that come to our school that, you know, they might be struggling because they don't have soap at home, or they don't have shampoo, or they don't have school supplies, you know, basic, basic needs. And so I've been working with a couple people who have a passion for this and what I'm hoping is that we can engage kind of the community in a broader sense. And sometimes I, I started with the churches, but I think, you know, this grows out into city council, you know, city manager, those types of things. To, is there ways that we can address that as a community? Like, I know right now I could clean out my kids' closets and bring in a boatload of clothes that they're not wearing. And would that be an opportunity to fulfill a need? Because when kids don't have soap, shampoo, and clothing or school supplies, they're not really focused on doing their math homework. You know, it's, it's one of those community needs issues. So my hope is that by partnering with local churches, that there'll be an interest in that. And there's probably things that we could do for our community together as a school district, you as board members along with the faith community and then other organizations in our school district that, you know, could just pull together that I'm not even aware of, that I think, I just want to try and see how we create those partnerships together. So that's the main objective.
Okay, and then back to this house bill that is passed. Carrie mentioned discussing, are we discussing it later tonight or at a later date?
Well, we'll be discussing it at a later date. There are some policy implications that you're not going to decide on tonight, but Mr. Peters, I believe, from Neola will talk a little bit about that because some of our policies will have to include some of the language from this piece of legislation.
Okay.
But yeah, if you wanted to ask a question about it, now's a fine time if you wanted to.
No, but I think, I'll wait for him, but before we have them write that, I think there's some things that need to be directed to our district, not just generalizing all districts, whatever Neola write. Because here over the last year plus, I think as a board, and I'll pick on all of this, I think we have some huge inconsistencies here. So I think we need to stop looking at what everybody's problem is when they walk in here and figure out a way where everybody kind of gets the same justice because we're not being very consistent in what we do. So, and I mean, we can, I think we've had all seven oh votes on it, so I mean, we're trying to come to a conclusion here, but the conclusion we're coming to isn't fair to every student. We're kicking out some longer than others and some not at all. And so I, I think when we do that policy, we need to carve a couple of them in stone that if you do this, you're out.
Sure.
And take it.
More consistency.
Well, and take it out of whatever the parent or the kid brings here is a problem. Did you do this or not? And if you did, you know, because I, you know, we have to look at the safety of 1,200 kids, not necessarily just the one sitting in front of us.
Right.
And, and, you know, my concern is the district, not an individual. So whenever we go to do that policy, I think there's some things we should iron out before that policy's put to press.
I agree. And I think one of the things that hopefully we'll be able to accomplish with this new format is that when you have discussion time, you guys can really discuss that stuff, you know, and really dive into, you know, before you're voting on any policies, you'll have a chance to kind of hash those out. It's good.
Okay.
So that's it for me.
Okay, thank you very much. Informational items.
Yep, so I, we had a couple questions to the board. Last time I posted those on the website, you know, they were also in your board packets, but just essentially, our relationship with the Gola Music and the administrator contracts. So the state of Michigan requires anybody over, compensated over $100,000 on their contract to be, their compensation details to be published. You can certainly find superintendent contracts, mine's out there if you go to that website that I put out. And our transparency documents are all out there, so that's that. And then I shared a little bit of our relationship with the Gola Music there as well. And those were the questions that I had answered and then I believe the, the rest of that stuff is in your board packet.
So we do have the contracts back online?
We don't have.
Back on our site?
We don't have contracts necessarily online. We have the compensation details.
Apologize.
Yes, yeah, you're right.
Okay.
Yep, so that's going to be, and if you go to that website there, you'll be able to find the information.
Well, that's why I'm asking, is it on our website?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yep. So it's a good, it was a good question. We actually by law have to provide the compensation detail and it's, it's pretty standardized, but it's, any staff member over $100,000 has to be included.
Does that include benefit baggage or just their compensation?
Yeah, so it puts their compensation, their benefits, any fringe benefits if there's a, like a stipend for retirement or any of that kind of stuff, so, yep.
Thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Next we have board subcommittee reports. We met for agenda review last week and brought the agenda that you have before you. And we didn't need for agenda review.
No, we did not.
Brian, there was no Golden One sites.
Nope.
And Mike, there was no meeting except the next.
Be for the next one, right?
Next, next, next time.
All right. So that's all we have for that. Board discussion items.
All right, so I wanted to give you an opportunity to, I think sometimes, and I don't, I don't know if my predecessor had ever done this, but sometimes there's questions that come up about, how are we going to review policies, how are we going to talk about policies? And you always hear the word Neola. And you probably get sick of hearing the word Neola because it's this mysterious company and not sure who's behind the curtain of Neola. So, so Mr. Peters, Wayne Peters is here. He has been a superintendent for a number of years in a few different districts. He has worked for Neola for quite a while, let him do a little bit more of an introduction. But what I've asked Mr. Peters to do tonight is to share with you as a board kind of some things to be thinking about in our policy review process that we're going to get started here in the next month or so. And so maybe some things to look for, but really I also wanted you to be able to talk with him if you had questions or you had things that you'd like to ask just about the way that we do business, the way that we operate compared to the way that districts do it across Michigan, so. Mr. Peters, do you want to pull a chair?
I'd like to try to work off a corner of the.
Yeah, it'd be great.
So I'm not standing up and holding it. I don't want to sit in front of you.
Oh, I'm.
If you don't want to hide behind me. I'm Wayne Peters. I've been your representative with Neola for 18 years. You were one of the first districts that I built a book from scratch after I took over this area. And so I knew all your board members at that time because that took long hours to develop that book. And often in the early years after that, I would, we'd update our policies twice a year. I would do those at a board meeting like this, which takes longer. I'm not going to spend that time tonight. Or with a board committee. I'd say about the last 10 years, I've just done it with your superintendent or some of the cabinet and the superintendent, or maybe an occasional board member or something like that. So when I was talking to Ben, I thought, I'd like a chance to, all the board faces have changed since those days and I really don't know your new board, so I'd like the opportunity to come and at least put a face to Neola. As Mr. Manka said, I was a superintendent for 24 years and I've been doing this with Neola for 18 years. So that's over 40 years of direct board experience, so I'm an old dinosaur as far as board policy. Got to tell you, I always have a special memory of Sports Creek because soon after we finished your book, on 9/11, I was sitting here with this then superintendent, was it probably, what, Jeff Hall or?
Roy Pearson.
Roy Pearson, okay. I'm sorry, he was here for some years. And Joan came into our meeting and said, turn on the TV, something bad is happening in New York City. And we sat here for the next two hours, just mesmerized and watched that whole morning unfold. And at some point, we looked at each other and said, my gosh, we're at war with somebody, who knows who, you know, but obviously this is, can't be a coincidence, so I'll never forget that's what's great. Neola is started about 40 years ago. Neola actually meant Northeast Ohio Learning Associates because that, it grew up around the Cleveland Akron area. We are in seven states and we have 1,400, between 1,400 and 1,500 school districts that we represent. We represent about 470 in Michigan, which is about 90, 95% of the school districts. So we found a, the company found a market niche. If you were a longtime board member, you would notice something that's happened. And that is before 1990, board policies were totally a reflection of what the local board wanted to run their schools. There was no school reform as we know it today. And, but then we started to get school reform and somebody saw a market niche. Because when the legislature passed legislation back in those days, they didn't say what you should be doing different at the school district. It was just, they published a law. So Neola's market niche was to take the legislation or the court decision or the attorney general opinion or whatever and turn it into, here's what you'll have to do different or additional at the local level. And since 1990, you know, school reform just is nonstop. And now, the downside is about half of your policies, you don't have a lot of choice over because it's either the federal or the state government or an attorney general or the department of Michigan, the Michigan School Board, so your state school board, or somebody's telling you what you have to do. The other half of your policies, you still have wide discussion over. I mean, a lot of decisions you have to make, but it's just so much of that has been taken away from you that I know it's frustrating to longtime board members. We, we operate in seven states, mostly in the Midwest and Florida and West Virginia and then Michigan, Ohio, Indiana, Wisconsin, Illinois. And we put out normally an update twice a year around September and March. I brought one which, and again, I'm not going to go through the whole thing because that takes two hours. But I will pass this around. I don't want you to feign because in the 18 years I've been with the company, this is by far the largest update we ever put out. So they aren't all like this. This just was a perfect storm of a lot of stuff going on in Michigan and the first rules from ESA coming out now and a lot of the things, so. But I thought you might be interested in what's in here. You notice it's a lot of colors. I'll start this one, this way. The yellow sheets on the top are an overview and Mr. Manka might decide to copy that for you. It's a little thumbnail sketch of what is driving each recommended change. Is it a state law? Is it federal? Is it ESA? Is it a court decision or whatever? I should back up and say, I know, you know, doing policy is like going to your dentist for hours at a time. And our, our mission is to keep bad things from happening to you. Lawsuits that you're going to lose, bad audits by all the agencies that are out auditing, being on the front page of the Flynn Journal tomorrow in a bad way, stuff like that. The whole purpose of our policy service is to get you ahead of the game in all those situations and it's so that you're doing. The whole purpose of our policy service is to get you ahead of the game in all those situations, and it's so that you're doing the right thing. You're gonna win your lawsuits, you're gonna survive your audits. The press is, is not going to be able to gotcha in some way. And it is, uh, and we probably, we, I know, we give you more stuff than anybody takes. But it's yours to say, "Yep, that has relevance in Schwartz Creek. No, that doesn't apply to us," or whatever, and you pick and choose. Right now, she's looking at some green sheets. We have seven, no, we have eight law firms that work for us, one in each of the seven states, and one in Washington that watches what's coming out of Congress and the Supreme Court. So these are our messages to the client from our various law firms. Sometimes it's tied to something that's in, in the pack, in the current pack. More often, it's a heads up to something that's coming down the road, but it isn't ripe yet to be a policy change, but it's, uh, it's on the horizon. And so just a heads up to you that, uh, this is an issue that's, that we're starting to recognize and is probably gonna end on your lap some, a year or two in the future as a recommended policy change. In the, in an update, the sheets under that are white. Those are the recommended changes to policy. Under that, in blue, are the recommended changes to administrative guidelines. That's the only time you'll see them in blue, otherwise everything is, all paper is in white. Beneath the blue sheets are changes to forms. When you did your guidelines with us, you also got a book of about three hundred forms, sample letters, evaluation instruments, checklist, whatever, usually tied more to a guideline than a policy. So, uh, that book is around here somewhere, and when, when there's a need for a form change, it's there. So, uh, that's, that's why all the colors. Where do I wanna go with this? I just, I just wanted to tell you that, uh, when I call on a district, you decide who you want me to meet. Whether it's the full board in a setting like this, or a board policy committee, or the superintendent and, and the central office administrators or whatever. And then you all, all districts have some internal process after I leave to, you know, to kind of staff it until the night that it starts to come to the board on the agenda. And then you have a, uh, by Michigan law, you have a first and a second reading. By the way, reading is, you don't have to actually read these things. That's a carryover from old English law. When, uh, when the general population was illiterate and the king passed a new law, he had readers go to each village and stand up on a stump and read the law to the public. Otherwise, they couldn't read, they wouldn't know what was in it. So that's where the term reading comes from, and any attorney will tell you it's still used, it's carried over into modern law. So don't feel that you have to actually read them aloud at each meeting, and that would add two hours to your meeting. So a better word would be first and second consideration. And it's good to have those at separate meetings because you want, sometimes you want some time to think about something, or somebody in the audience raises a question and you have to do a little research before you can give them an answer. So it's generally a good thing to, uh, to have two readings with some separation in, in between. If it's really urgent, the, the law allows you to suspend your second, your second reading, uh, just for that night, just for that meeting, and pass something on a single reading, and then at the end of that night, the second reading feature comes back into force. But it would have to be something, you know, tied to emergency. We, when I was superintendent at Holliday, vandals burned down about a third of our high schools. So the next night, the board met, and the first thing we did was suspend the two, two readings or, you know, and did a lot of things on a single motion to get, to get ahead of the repairs and stuff like that, so you can always do that in a crisis.
So I guess, I guess, uh, one of the things I was hoping for our discussion tonight would be to, um, since Wayne is here, that you'd have the opportunity to ask questions of him if you have questions about policy. And then also, as we talked at our board retreat, one of the main functions of the school board is to establish policy. So this is when we talk about getting into each other's lanes, and you have the roles of the superintendent, you have the roles of the board. This is really, uh, a, a critical function of the board. So, um, I kinda wanted you to talk through, um, how you would like to see these policy review processes going. Uh, do you wanna continue with the way that you were doing it when, but prior to me coming? Would you like Wayne and I to meet and then meet a, I will always be providing you with recommendations, but, um, but how, how would you like to, to see that done, and I, and I wanted to give you an opportunity to kind of talk through that.
So are you familiar, Mr. Peters, with what we've just done over the last year?
No, because when I come and meet with whoever I meet with, I really don't know what happens after that.
Okay, so in the last year, we spent some time, we split up the various sections amongst board members.
Okay, okay.
We teamed up and reviewed all of the sections and then came to-
Section by section.
Came to the full board and made some recommendations about some, sometimes it was wordsmithing. But often it was maybe a change, an actual change or an addition to that policy.
That's smart, because a lot of the things in your policy were decisions made fifteen years ago by different boards, different superintendent. And, and even if they were good decisions then, things change over the years. That might not be the proper, uh, choice now, so.
What about the frequency at which we should do that? Do a full review? Is it every few years or?
Well, you're, we're gonna come at you twice a year and force you to look at changes required by law and stuff like that, so.
But it's not comprehensive?
No, it's not by section.
So this is a comprehensive picture? So is it, is it every two years is adequate, or are the changes so often? Because we do review the ones that you send us. I actually look for, I'm a geek, so I look forward to those.
You'll be exhausted just dealing with the stuff that we bring you.
Right, 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 but then-
But yeah, I would do it by section.
Okay.
Uh, you, you mean to read those of some of those older choices made years ago? Yeah, I would do it by section, uh, maybe a section every month or two. I mean, you have so much else on your agenda. Yeah, and, and again, I'm available to come and be a resource to you or whatever. Use me any way you want. It's, it's part of the service, you know.
Anybody have questions, Mr. Peters?
I do.
Sure.
Is that the format you always send these to us in?
Yes.
Okay. From this point forward, can we get those in that format?
Absolutely.
Can we get a stack of white paper? We have never seen a form. Never seen that cover sheet in the yellow that kind of gives a quick, "Hey, this is why we did this."
I, I would recommend that, that because when this first comes out, you know, it's maybe gonna be a month or two before it comes on the board agenda. And this kind of alerts you to the kind of things, it, it, it's like dropping the first shoe, you know? Pretty soon, this is gonna come to you on a, on a part of an agenda. But here's what, here's what's coming, and here's what's driving it, here's, you know.
Yeah, we, we've not seen that.
Okay, well many-
We've gotten the two different group of changes.
Sure.
So, uh, and so you are available?
I'm available.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm available, yep, that's part of the service.
Never knew that either.
Huh?
Never knew that either.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's not just seeing me twice a year, it's, it's twenty-four, seven. You, you can, you, you can send us stuff to the company any time of the year. I mean, obviously, you'll have a big pile of things that, based on our updates. But any other time of the year, if you wanna amend a policy or create a new one, I wanted to say, where, who was it? Was it, you said wordsmithing? You gotta be careful that you, Neola gives you a warranty with anything that's done by our attorneys. And that is, if you get sued or badly audited or that, we defend what our attorneys did. Even to the point of going to court and sitting with your district attorney and defending it. If you do too much wordsmithing, you could wordsmith yourself out of the warranty. If you had a policy written by your local attorney, your, your normal district attorney. Neola won't warranty that. Obviously, they won't spend company money or reputation defending what, but whoever wrote it for you, they should warranty it. I mean, they obviously charge you something, so that should, that should imply a warranty that they'll stand behind it. But a good way to tell what's, what's available to wordsmith and what isn't is, look at the last page. Like you get into some of the discrimination policies, or harassment, or bullying or that. On the last page, you'll see ten, twelve, fifteen citations. That policy we offered you is complying with fifteen different laws. That's like a red flag. Don't wordsmith that because it's been carefully crafted to keep all these courts and legislatures happy. And if you, if you wordsmith it without knowing that you're doing it, you're gonna take it down a different road. Where there are fewer citations, or you can tell, uh, if you had a chance to look at these, by the way, you'll see, uh, two kinds of language. Anything that is a, has a bracket over on the left-hand margin of a paragraph is a choice. It would be legal if you picked it. We will never show you anything that isn't legal. But it's your choice whether you want it in your policy or not. But if it doesn't have a bracket, it's required by some law that you'll find in the citation. So, um, even within a, even within a heavily proscribed policy like nondiscrimination, there are still choices that you can make locally as a board. And, uh, I'll give you an example. Uh, Mr. Mainke was talking about restorative practices. The, the law that the legislature passed said, "You have to consider restorative practices." But actually implementing them is still a choice. I'm, I'm guessing down the road a couple of years, it'll be removed as a choice and it'll become mandatory, but, you'll find when these finally come to your agendas, uh, the bullying policy, the two suspension expulsion policies, one is for things tied to weapons law, where you have to give a mandatory, you know, ninety or a hundred and eighty day expulsion to a kid. And then the other one is things not tied to the state weapons law. All those have restorative practices as a choice. And then there's another list that was in the legislation that just came out in December, of things you must consider before you levy your discipline. And the, the background to that is, far too many districts were, uh, somebody was mentioning zero tolerance policy. People, districts were overdoing that. They were, they, they, I don't wanna say blindly, but they, they overreacted. "Oh, if so-and-so did this, we have zero tolerance, you're out." And the state said, "You have to consider other things first. Then if you've done that and you still think this is serious enough to do expulsion, fine, you can do that." But if you don't consider these other things that we built into the legislation, you're gonna lose. The, the language you'll see when you get to see it is, you've given the other side a, uh, a, a rebuttal opening that if you didn't consider these things before you decided on your discipline, uh, you have not, you violated the current law. So it's just means it's some things you have to look at. Just to go back a little more in background, it seems to be falling very heavily on minority students. Minority students were getting zero tolerance expulsions more than other, uh, nationalics or other, uh. So, the, the, the state said, "We're not saying you can't long-term suspend or expel. We're just saying you have to look at this list. It'll show up A through G. It's seven things you have to consider." Then if you're still determined that this is serious enough to expel, you can do it. So it hasn't taken that away from you. It just makes you, it forces you to consider some things. In other words, consider each case on its own details before you automatically expel, so.
So, um, unless there are any objectives or objections, what I can-
Getting into the weeds now.
Right. What I can start to do is provide, because I can get these updates, right? So I can make copies so that you can see, like, here are the yellows, here's the whites, here's the, and so, um, you know, that could be a good way of, of reviewing policies. And one of the things that, that I think you'd ask the question about, the comprehensive review, simply by keeping up with the updates every few years, and I think Lorraine talked about this last time, every two to three years, you're gonna be, have gone through your policies just by dealing with the, the regular flow of change, so. You know, that's something.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Anything that's coming from our government or our court is gonna change every few years because they keep thinking of new things to add. So the things that you wouldn't be forced to review coming from us would be the more local optional based ones. And so, uh, because anything coming from, uh, a higher authority, I can guarantee you it's, they're changing all the time. You'll always have the way version from us. What would be the other thing? Something that's truly unique to Schwartz Creek or that? That might not get reviewed normally unless you do it, you know? It wouldn't be on our list of things to review. So, uh, I would say, you know, before you build too big a schedule for yourself, let's do any catching up that needs to do, and survive one or two of these things for months. And if you still have the stomach to go out and do more reviewing, we'll do that. And again, I'll come, I'll come to your meetings if you want and be a resource to you for that, too.
I do, I do have one question on restorative practices, just as an example, because I haven't seen, at least in our policies, where we are required to consider something like counseling or something that could require the family to incur a cost. I do know that in our deliberations as a board, we have given consideration and recommendations that might include counseling or, um, random drug testing, or something else that might, um, be a cost to the family. I didn't see in the law-
A cost to you.
Right, so I didn't see in the law where it said who had to pay for that. But it does say that we must consider that as, as options.
One thing I'm already hearing back from boards and superintendents, just, uh, I, I work with sixty-six districts, so I've been out for a month now going through this kind of update. The, the comment I, and I didn't expect it, but they're right. They said, "You know, if you adopt the, what we're showing you as far as restorative practices, you're giving a lot of power to the victim and their family to kind of set the tune as to what you have to do as a board." So just something to consider. Many districts have a version of their own of restorative practices and have had for years, so, and, uh, so anyway, just something to look at, that you, you know, you really, when you give that much power to the family and their student, it's no longer the boards, you know? If you say in your policy, "We will do this, this, and this," then you gotta do it, or else they've now got a claim against you. Yeah.
This isn't necessarily a question to you, but Mike and I took the G I S D class that has to do with this restorative practices that goes into effect in August. And so, um, Brad, Brad Vanassek put that on, and I think Mike would agree that it would be great as a board to sit down with Brad or someone else and discuss that because it is a big, big change coming down, and that starts in August.
It's a good suggestion.
I'm glad you mentioned Brad because, uh, one thing I didn't mention, about seven years ago, M A S B's policy service and Neola merged. And Brad Vanassek sits in at all of our planning meetings and often writes some of the language that goes into the Neola thing. You can, if you were a new, new client, new customer that never had Neola, you could either order it through us or through M A S B. But what you'll end up getting is somebody like me and the Neola materials, because you just have two ways to order it.
Correct, if I'm wrong, though.
Yeah.
By August, we have to consider it.
Yeah.
We don't have to accept it.
No.
So we're not on a timeline to be done by August if we, if we choose to change anything.
You just have to consider whether you want it in your policy or not by August. You don't have to, right now, it's, restorative practices are-
So if we choose not to-
Presented as a choice.
So if we choose not to-
Yes.
We have another year to work on it, or six months, or whatever.
Well, I don't know for sure that it's gonna turn from a choice into a demand. It's just, that's kind of the way things often happen.
But we don't have a timeline to have this done by August. Because we cannot consider-
Only the considering of it.
Correct.
Where you, yeah.
But if I don't consider it, I can come back in a year from now and consider it.
Yeah, yeah.
So we really don't have a timeline. Because historically, we have a way of rushing things at the last minute. We don't really have to do that. We have to make a decision by August.
You have to make a decision by-
But we don't have to rewrite any policy by August.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Well, another part of that policy is the seven things that you must consider.
Correct, that's, and that's fine, and that's-
That's not a choice. That, that's what you'd have in place.
And, and I would like, and I would like to think that those seven choices start before we would ever see someone at an expulsion hearing, unless it's a very serious offense. Because if one of them is counseling, we have counselors. So the first time Billy gets in trouble, Billy should get counseled before he goes back to class. So we're gonna start the counseling aspect of it. We should start it the first time the kid is down to the office and in trouble.
I'm not sure, but I'm not sure that you get to pick the counselor. Like I say, that one of the things is you, this transfers a lot of authority to the family. And, um, if the family didn't like sitting down with your counselor, they'd be able to choose another counselor.
And that's fine.
Yeah.
But what I'm saying is, what I'm saying is the student could be counseled. Is it saying the family has to get counseling or the student has to get counseling?
Well, it, the decision of- Well, the decision about some of these things in restorative practices, because most of these kids are minors, the actual decision is made by the parent. Again, I'm speaking without you having the benefit of seeing the details in it, but-
Right, but we have counselors and they visit with children every day and they don't get parental permission before every session.
No.
Okay.
But they're, they're counseling them on things that, one way or another, the board has already implemented years ago. Restorative practices is, like Dennis said, is techniques to mitigate the damage that this harasser or discriminator did to people. That's new. I'm not even sure that your regular school counselors are fully trained in that yet. It's, it's a whole new ballgame.
Right.
Hang on for the ride, because that's what the business has become.
Well, I think it's a good suggestion, maybe we have somebody like Brad come on then.
It'll be clearer when you have a chance to read, you know, everything that's in it.
Just a quick one. I certainly respect and appreciate everything Neola does. I mean, I think that's really guided us through a lot of storms and I'm glad you're there.
I don't know who had, would have the time to do this.
No, nobody.
I mean, if it wasn't us, or M A S B or that, I mean-
That's why ninety percent-
It's coming at you from so many directions.
Yeah. But I appreciate that. Well, what about a cost schedule? Is there any extra costs, I mean, under normal?
No, you, you pay for the twice-a-year update, and if your stuff is online with us, there's a once-a-year maintenance fee for that. Otherwise, no. I, I mean, if you, if I was coming in here and your, your policies had been left go for six years and we had to do a big repair job-
Right.
We'd have to bill you some-
Right.
Some hours there. Not so much for me, I'm not in this for the money, but somewhere, if somebody in our company is inputting this all on the server, and they're not going to work it for free.
Right.
So, but no, I-
We, we-
If I don't submit extra time to the company, it's, it's between me and you, they, they don't know.
We appreciate what Neola does here. I do anyway.
I wish when I was working there, but fortunately, there wasn't all this school reform jungle at that time.
It's nice to finally meet you, Mr. Mankin. It's nice to finally meet you.
Well, thank you.
We've heard a lot of great things about this, so it's nice to finally meet you.
Tell me what you've heard.
Good things.
I've got most of the districts in Genesee County now, just a couple I don't have.
Thank you for being here. We certainly appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Call me back whenever you want.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, true. Yeah, I have boxes in. There'll be one lots to carry around.
All right.
Okay, next on our agenda is piano discussion.
So at our last meeting, as you know, we had, well, a couple of months ago, we had a discussion about what it would look like to purchase a piano for a performing arts center. We had a sealed bid process, and I'm going to just, as a review, share these with you. These are the, these are the pianos that were included in the bid. At the last meeting, you did not feel comfortable with the information that you had ready, ready to make a decision, which was completely fine. And at this point, we have enlisted the help of some experts. And so I want to first pass out, I, he wasn't able to be here tonight, but there's a gentleman by the name of Dennis Yoncho. Dennis Yoncho is a piano technician. He works all over the eastern side of Michigan, and he works with a lot of different, you know, piano companies, and, and he is pretty widely considered to be a piano expert. So I've printed off an email, he just sent me an email, I sent him the specs, and so, just so you have for your review on that. Essentially, what he was recommending is that, you know, he, he didn't necessarily recommend a particular model, but he recommended a few that he would not consider. So you can see that there. And I think probably one of the benefits that we have is, and I'm really excited, Mr. Eichler is with us today. So Dennis Eichler is widely regarded as a piano expert, particularly for grand pianos around the Genesee County area. He's an independent piano technician. He works, has his own company. And, and so I had given him the list of pianos, and I just was asking if he would be willing, and he certainly is. He's going to give us a brief recommendation based on his experience, and, and if you have any questions for him, Mr. Eichler.
Thanks. I would also like to say that he's quite an artist, too. Excellent, Dennis. Well, I, I see eight, eight bids here. I think Piano Nation's bids are a little high, the price they're offering. Like Dennis, there's a few of these brands I wouldn't recommend, the Rittmuller, the William Knabbe. It scares me how cheap they are. Pretty, pretty much the, you know, in the entertainment world, it's either Yamaha or Steinway is pretty much the top dogs. And there's other very fine pianos to buy. I didn't know there were so many people here. I only have eight of these, but I printed off, off a website of all nine-foot concert grants made in the world and what they cost, but would you be interested in looking at some of those?
Absolutely. I think that'd be great for them to see.
Thank you, Sharon.
You can look at a nine-foot Steinway, has a list price of around a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, something like that. There's a second column, it's called S M P. That's sort of a price they guess at, which has never exceeded. So it gives you an idea of what companies get their list price or close to it versus which companies don't. And that's when you look at the, the cheaper brands, you see a larger discrepancy in the list price of the product versus what it actually sells for. I, I did a little research on my own, in case, I, I don't know if, how your bid process works, if it's closed, you can't entertain any other offers. Is that how it works, or?
That, that is how it works, yeah.
Okay.
Or, but if you have a better idea, we don't have to accept any of these.
Correct, yeah.
So we're more, we're happy to listen.
Well, I, just from my own research, I, I wanted to know what a, you know, a Steinway product would cost, quoted from a Steinway dealer, rather than somebody selling used ones and rebuilt ones. For a, a school-type institution, a brand-new one is a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, it's about a twenty-five percent discount. There also is other alternatives. For instance, the, both Yamaha and Steinway have what are called C N A pools, which are rental pianos that are used in concerts, and then at some point, they become retired. The one that Flint Symphony Orchestra uses for the last seven years can be sold. It's only, it was made in two thousand and ten, so it's only seven years old, and ninety thousand would be the price for that. I don't know what the budget is you're looking at, but when I look at this, one sticks out like a sore thumb, just being the bang for the buck, and that's the Yamaha CF3 that Abola Music wants to sell. Out of all those eight, that, that one to me is hands-down the, you're buying a product that's very well-known, and it sounds like a really good price. So do you have any questions?
If it's still good to be true?
No. No, I don't think so.
I'm just, I'm just asking you. You just told us it was great and a great price.
It, I don't remember the exact age of the piano. I believe it's twelve years old.
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. Well, the M S R P of a nine-foot Yamaha is about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
So it's one-third the price, huh?
Yeah.
And-
And I don't really know if they sell for that. The handout I gave you indicates they do, but I, you know, I don't know how accurate that information really is. It's, you know, kind of subjective as far as the guy who does the publication.
When I was talking to Mr. Yoncho, he was also explaining to me that, you know, securing a piano and protecting it and keeping it at a certain temperature, humidity, and it appears as though we have all of those things here at our P A C. We've got a protective room, or an area anyway, and it's, and we can talk to Mr. Martin about that, but I, I agree with the Yamaha. I think that's a great bang for the buck.
Yeah.
And we have it in the budget anyway.
When, when you watch television, if you see a classical symphony, it's usually a Steinway. If you're watching an award show with David Foster up there, it's a Yamaha. Both, both have an extensive, you know, roster of endorsed artists, you know? But I've been tuning for Flint Symphony for over twenty-five years, and there's only been two times somebody's asked for a piano that wasn't a Steinway, and that was a Yamaha artist and the Blutner artist, which is on that sheet also.
Which is out of our press range.
Yeah.
Well-
And I would like, I don't want you to buy something old. Some of these rebuild, like the one you got on here that says fifty thousand dollars for a nineteen-seventy-five Steinway Model D. Well, I've got a couple nine-foot pianos at F I M. that are seventy-two, seventy-four, and there's no way they would sell for fifty thousand. I, I just don't believe it. I'd say thirty-five, that would be my guess, thirty-five. And for instance, he's got, on your Piano Nation bid, a two thousand and four Steinway Model D for a hundred and fifteen thousand. And I've got one that's only seventy years old, they want ninety. Right? So that's why I kind of think their, their quotes are a little, a little high.
I have a question.
Sure.
We have this, on the descriptions, it's mostly the, the finishes?
I, I just chose black ones.
Okay.
I didn't do any of the walnuts or anything. Those are all more money, and I never thought you'd, you'd buy a, you know, any bit of black ones.
Okay, but then, so this, and it mentions the polish or the finish.
Does any of that have any bearing on how it plays or how it will upkeep it or anything like that?
No, I don't think so.
So it's basically just looks?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And I know the, the C N A pianos that you buy use, they, they can have some rash on them. I mean, they're, they're not in perfect condition. And your new piano will have some rash on it ten years from now. I mean, that's just the way it is. It's my understanding the Yamaha piano is, was owned by a private owner, so I, I haven't seen it or played it, but I would imagine if it's been in somebody's house for twelve years, it's going to be pretty darn near perfect as far as any gouges in it or-
What's the life expectancy of a nine-foot grand?
Well, that's kind of hard to guess. You've got really good air and heat and humidity control. I don't, you know, you could get a forty or fifty years' use out of a piano. Flint Institute Arts has a nine-foot Steinway. It's twenty, about twenty-two years old now, still sounds brand-new and great.
Does use factor?
Uh, yeah, yeah, the more it gets played, the more you would wear out action parts, hammers, and what have you.
Are these instruments normally, do you, I mean, these are high-end instruments. Are they normally used just for the grand performance or for the practices also? Do we have, like, something stepped down? I think we already, already have a keyboard in there now for the practice, and then we would use this for probably the grand performance.
Well, you take your piano you have in the auditorium already and probably move it back to the choir room, I would imagine. Because the grand piano that's in the choir room is pretty poor condition.
Well, I really appreciate you giving us some of your time tonight and, and being willing to share some of your expertise. And I know that we wanted to create, have a little bit of time to hear from Mr. Luke. I know that several of the board members wanted to hear from Mr. Luke since he was the one that kind of brought this to our attention initially. But Mr. Eichler, thank you so much for your expertise and all that you've given us here.
Okay.
Thank you.
If we do decide on a keyboard, on an instrument, could we have something inspected before we actually make the purchase? I mean, to make sure it's, it's, you know, quality? I mean, it's, there's, I would just like to know that it's in really good shape.
We could actually have somebody like Mr. Eichler, we could hire him to look at it too for us.
I think an inspection would be very, very much more important.
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Dennis. All right, Mr. Luke, or is Mr. Luke?
Quick question, man.
Oh, yeah.
How do we, how do we find him?
He is the, he's an independent piano technician and actually around Genesee County. If you know anything about pianos, you know, you know him. And I found that out, so.
I'm going to have the state-
Take care of the pianos here for your schools.
Okay.
After looking at the pianos, and I have to tell you that as much as I, I probably am the piano expert here at the district, but I'm not a trained pianist by any stretch. I have piano training at the course in college. I was looking as a teacher along these lines. I want something that's going to last and that's going to be able to be, to put up with the rigors of performance and those things. So I've kind of looked at this maybe a little bit differently than what you've heard already this evening. But my recommendation was the Yamaha because of the price point, and I know for a fact that they wear like iron. We have a couple of Yamaha upgrades in our program already, and they're still going very strong. I've played Yamahas, Steinways, Kimbels, Kaways, and Baldwin's, and I've been always impressed with the Yamaha quality. You know, I saw that for that price, I thought that was probably a pretty good deal for us.
Any questions for Mr. Luke?
I do have a question, and this isn't necessarily for you, but all of these, or most of these quotes here have a bench. Is included in the bench? Does it make a difference if you have a bench or stool? A piano stool?
You can sit on something.
I know, but I mean, is it?
I don't know if I can answer that too much.
No, I, every piano comes with a bench. That's kind of like buying a car and they're going to tell you get the wrong-
The steering wheel.
Right. You know, but it's either, so it makes it seem like it's a big thing here, and I'm just wondering, to me, if a bench is a bench? But so do the-
Well, most of the concert grants have an artist bench, you know, the real fancy kind with the knobs that raise it up and down.
Okay. So we are to assume that, that those are the kind of benches that are included here in these?
Uh, I'm not sure.
Okay.
And another thing I would consider, too, at some point Yamaha started putting these big gigantic beautiful brass wheels on their piano, so you don't need to buy the, the big dolly-
Uh-huh.
That's designed to roll as is. I don't know if the piano on that bid has those wheels or not, and I don't know that information.
I, I am certainly not a piano expert, but I can say that when we were looking at those, that it does have the dolly, the wheels that you're speaking of.
The real big brass ones with the lock, the lock nuts.
It would be nice to have that.
Yeah. They sound better. The Spider dollies have gigantic rubber wheels, and they, they, I, I believe they take some of the low end of the piano's tone away. The solid brass ones, they, they just transfer tone, the bass frequencies better.
But we don't know if this Yamaha has the big brass ornamental casters.
Ryan? We actually do know that it does have the brass wheels. You have any other questions, just let us know.
So any other questions for Mr. Luke?
Yes. You're the one that's going to be using this mostly. And we talked to Mr. Martin about the storage and the humidity in your piano and all of that kind of stuff. So moving it in and out, does that do anything as far as tuning or anything like that on that piano?
I don't believe so. As long as we take care of it, I think. We've been doing the same thing on our current piano. We roll that into that same storage area. We try to keep, you know, because they don't have a door on it yet, we try to keep the kids away from it. And I think it's been holding up fairly well. I mean, we've had to call you a couple of times when the humidity kind of jumped a little bit, but if we, we keep that room kind of, climate control, that little room, I think it'll, I think it'll do well. And we only bring it out that one currently. We only bring it out when it's time to perform out there, and it gets rolled back when we're done, and, you know, it's, it's, we don't let the kids play on it, you know, unless they're, unless they're going to play something for a concert, and we'll let them use that for a concert, and we'll, we'll let them use that. So I think it'll hold pretty well as long as we get that room clear and the door shut and the humidity out there. I think it'll last.
So that is the intent for the new piano then, just for specific concerts? Because you had mentioned the other piano is not in such good shape. We're really not swapping a new one. This is for special things. Okay.
Yeah.
If we pick one of these or another one or whatever we do, you would be interested in going and trying it all?
Sure. Love to go and try some. I like playing.
Well, we can have the expert, and we have the person that's going to play it.
Yeah, okay. Love to go play.
And we also have in Mr. Yoncho's letter here, a responsible maintenance person who's looking after the piano daily. Is that, would that be your job or who?
Daily. Well, I think he's probably meaning to make sure the humidifier is...
Okay.
I, I'm not sure. I think, yeah, just make sure that those, those things are going.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, that's, that's something we'll have to make sure is, is taken care of.
Okay. So your recommendation then is this Evol Music Yamaha CF3?
CF3.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Luke. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
So when we get into our action items, you're going to have a resolution, and you've heard a couple recommendations from people who are, you know, certainly qualified to make them. I am not personally tied to any of these, but I think we need to either, you know, decide on one. You, you can make a decision to, to do what you want to do when we get to the resolution part, and so you can entertain that at that time. I also want to just talk on the consent agenda. Something that we pulled out was the Summer Leadership Institute. And so I wanted to bring your, and I know I sent you an email about it, but I, I can appreciate having a conversation out here about it. So next year in the fall, we are, we are implementing an instructional framework. And the instructional framework is, it comes from the Center for Educational Leadership. This is a widely-used framework here in Michigan. It's actually widely-used across the country. But the Center for Educational Leadership is a research arm for the University of Washington, and they basically study all these studies. You know how you have, like, you, you may have heard of somebody by the name of Robert Marzano, or you may have heard of somebody by the name of Doug Reeves or Charlotte Danielson. These are all educational researchers, and so they all have for-profit companies. The Center for Educational Leadership is a nonprofit, and they're a research institution. So the way I kind of describe them is university, what University of Michigan is to medicine and engineering, the University of Washington is to education. So it's a hotbed for research around best practices and those things. So I give you that background to let you know that they are the authors of our instructional framework. And so in the fall, our administrative team, myself, and Mr. Heatherton are going to be tasked with really leading that shift and helping teachers work with this new instructional framework. I've done some early communication with the teachers. I'm going to be doing something in May at our early release day, and I know we talked a little bit about it at Academic Achievement. And so that's going to be a very critical part of our initiative, is our, really our initiative next year. So they are putting on their Summer Leadership Institute this year, and I think because of the timing of that, I typically go to, try to go to a national conference, and I've done that over the past eight to ten years. One year I went down, I had the opportunity to go to the principal school down in Harvard. I've had the opportunity to go to ASCD out in Maryland. And so these are things that myself or administrators need to kind of freshen up, come back to the district, and be able to lead the charge on those things. So their Summer Leadership Institute is July eighteenth through twentieth. It's, it is out in Seattle. Not talking about taking a whole team out there, but I am, I'm, I'm asking for Mr. Heatherton and myself to go out there because there's going to be specific focus sessions on how we implement this framework in our district and maximize the benefit for our kids. So that's the, the, the trip, and I wanted to kind of explain that to you, you know, as, so that you could ask questions. And I did send an email, but if you have any questions that you'd like to ask, feel free to do that.
Any questions for Ben?
What grades does this impact the most?
Uh, it impacts all grades, so K through twelve. It's, uh, it's going to have an impact on everybody, and it also will have ramifications for evaluation. So there's a, there's evaluation, there's also the day-to-day of, you know, what are the strategies, if you will, that a teacher's going to use with students? And when we start talking to, let's just step outside of Schwartz Creek. If I were to go to any, let's say John Doe school, and I were to ask a teacher, what, what do you think great teaching is? They'd give you, you know, well, I kind of like doing this, and then I kind of like it. So everybody's kind of doing their own thing. And what this work does, it says, this is what is proven through research to help students learn the best, and we're going to try and maximize that so that everybody's on the same page. So that's, that's kind of the, the nature of the work. And so it impacts, it's a good question. It impacts K through twelve.
Just you and Rod are going?
Yes.
And then when you get back, how do you implement it to the entire staff and the building administrators?
So in the fall, I'll be doing a rollout with the whole district at the PAC. In June and also in August, we'll be doing six full days of training with the entire administrative staff and about thirty-five to forty teachers. And they're going to be like the leadership team. And that leadership team is going to help in every building. So we'll have representation from every building. Those six full days of training are one hundred percent covered by the training grant from the state of Michigan. So there's an educator evaluation training grant, and we're able to pay for that. So it's no charge to the district.
What does that have to do with that?
So, so that...
Because isn't this in July?
This is in July. So this is in a hundred percent paid for.
No, but how does that, how do, if you haven't been to that yet, June has nothing to do with this?
No, June is, so June is the framework training that all administrators get. So we're going to start that in June. We're going to have three days in June, three days in August. This is going to be for district leaders, like Rod and I, to go and find out what are the things that we have to have in place, that we need to be working with you and updating you on to make sure this thing is successful as we roll it out.
Right. Go back to my question. So how do you get this to the staff? Those three days in August?
So the staff is going to be getting it year, it's, it's an ongoing throughout the year. So we're going to have early release. We're going to have a full...
Okay, so you're going to do it on PD days?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And then there's a, there's a full PD day in the fall that the entire day will be devoted to that as well.
I, I guess my question is, 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 you obviously do other things on PD days, so how does all this get implemented to the staff? I mean...
Well, that's just the thing.
I guess I'd say there's not enough hours in the day if this is truly something that's worthwhile.
Well, that's, that's exactly the point of this, is that we have, in my estimation, too many things going on. And so what I'm trying to do is say, we actually have to figure out what we need to stop doing so that we can invest in the most important things and then do those really well. And so that's part of the streamlining and aligning our systems so that, you know, even in my interview, kind of what I was talking about is making the complex work possible. Because right now, you know, we got this initiative, this initiative, this initiative, this initiative. Teachers are, you know, they're going crazy. So trying to take the good work that we're doing that is the most important and take the, some of the other things and just kind of put those aside for now so that we can get really focused on this. Yeah.
And how long is this conference?
This is three days. And it's in the middle of July. So the good news is there's no, I mean, I'm working, Rod's working, but there's hopefully not going to be any crisis in the district in the middle of July anyway. We hope.
Well, you're taking your cell, aren't you?
Yeah, I'm taking my cell.
Joan's here.
That's right. Joan will be here.
You don't get a vacation at that thing. You've got to run the district.
She's in charge. All right.
Thanks, Ben. Thank you very much.
Thanks. I wasn't digging.
No, I know. That's a good question. Good conversation.
Okay, so on to board action items. We have a resolution to purchase the piano for the PAC as we just discussed. I would entertain a motion, including identifying the piano that we should pursue.
I make a motion to purchase the Yamaha CF3 from Evol Music for fifty-eight thousand seven hundred dollars, including the bench.
And two.
And what?
What's that?
An inspection.
What's that?
An inspection.
We're going to have an inspector first?
Yes, absolutely.
Yes.
Pending inspection.
And have Mr.?
Oh, yeah. And have, um, Mr. Luke, that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Satisfied with it.
Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Tony.
He beats it to it.
Any comments or questions?
Uh, I think we're forgetting probably the most, one of the most important parts. That we're going to get a door installed and humidity control in that room before it's delivered as well. Because we just sat and listened to how important that was, but we haven't, so we need to dress all.
So I would, I would add to that, right, I would, I would, I mean, obviously, do what you want, but I would say that whatever one you choose, that you have the, a roll door installed, and we've, we've identified what that would look like in that space.
So Brian, could you amend your...
Yes, that's climate controlled and that it's secure.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
One last comment. I, I would like to see, you, you can implement this on your own. If you choose to, but I would like to see one person have control of it.
Okay.
Because then it's not going to be, well, so-and-so got it out, or so-and-so did this. I, I don't care who you give the control to, but it'd be under one person's control.
Okay.
Okay. Any others? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you.
Can I just ask one question, please, in regard, regards to this? Who else would have, who else would need use of that in our school district on a regular basis?
Oh, my gosh.
They play, they have them included. They play rollouts, and they play for their solos and stuff. They, not occasionally, they, they have piano with. Within our district, that's just a band in the choir. We do have, every now and then a traveling opera comes in, and they use just the grand piano out there to accompany everything. So, I mean, I don't think many people would need to have, you know, a piano.
Thank you.
You're just going to be earning your day off, man. He's salivating.
Okay, next we have the GISD biennial election resolution. As I understand it, this requires us to have two votes, one now and one after...
One in May.
May.
This will be the first of two resolutions.
So we need to identify board members to, a board member to attend this with an alternate in the event that the primary cannot attend, maybe on June fifth at seven P M. Each school district is required to send somebody.
Need two.
Right. We need a primary person that would take responsibility of the going and a, and a person who's an alternate.
We established that last week, right?
We did establish that. We made Brian.
Well, this, I think we actually identified Genesee County School Board Association versus, this is the GISD vote.
I'm going to be out of town, by the way, so...
Oh, coffee.
Come on, man.
I will be out of town.
This is being aired, tell the truth now.
Out of town. Out of town.
You will be having a coffee.
Do I have a Collins here? How come? Is Stacy okay?
I did it last time.
Do we have someone will, will back Stacy?
What day is that?
No. June fifth at seven P M. At the GISD.
What day is that?
Monday.
Monday? Well, it says, uh, first Monday in June.
Narrow it down.
It's a Monday. Okay.
I'll be alternate.
Okay, Tony.
Good job.
Maybe I'll get a coffee, and you have to go.
All right. I entertain a motion to that effect.
Show the...
Support.
All right. So we will be sending, Mrs. Bass, Mrs. Glynn as the primary and Tony as the secondary. Any comments or questions? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Is anyone?
We have a food delivery being purchased.
So I just want to give you just a quick background, just before you vote on this. So our food service fund is different than our general fund, and you probably know that already, but...
Oh, thank you.
We actually got notified from the, and, and I know that this sounds odd, but we actually got a citation for our, our fund balance being larger than it's supposed to be in our food service account. And so that prompted a need for us to use the money to draw that money down so the state doesn't allow you in your food service account. So this isn't coming out of general fund, but I'll let, John, do you want to kind of just review that real quick?
Yes, thank you. It, it, going back to what Ben said, I know the notice on the food service fund balance, what they, what the state wants and looks for districts to have is that the average of the fund balance to be an average of the three months operating funds available in the funding. With that, we, we, we have, we had the submitted plan to the state of, of, of what we're going to utilize those funds for. And the vans were one of those items, and we're looking at, talking with Bill and Jennifer Yee, are, we're looking at renovating our cafeterias and a couple of our elementarys as well. So that, that was submitted. We also got approval for that plan as well. The, the, the reason the state is doing it, and we also have some board policy on the, for the, for student balances as well. But the reason they're doing this, the more it is, the food service fund is, is, is predominantly it's local revenues. It's the student fees and collections, but there's also a lot of federal, the free and reduce and the, the money coming in from the state, which is, some of it's federal as well. There's guidelines stipulations related to that, and they, they don't want districts accumulating funds and utilizing it for whatever they choose to do, whether enhancing all kinds of things. So they, they want managed fund balance. They want a plan of action, how we're going to utilize, utilize those funds. And again, this is going to the vans, this is the first step in utilizing that fund balance.
So we put the, we put on our state bid website, and we put it out to sealed bid like we do, like actually we did with the panel. And then essentially with the vans, they're all the same model. They're the same type of van. And so the lowest bid for the vans was Berker Chevrolet. So that's what we're recommending that you approve tonight.
Where's that located?
Grand Rapids area.
Grand Rapids area.
Grand Rapids.
Yeah. So we received three of them from local, from local viewerships, but there was one, the lowest was from Burger, Burger Chevrolet in Grand Rapids, twenty-four thousand eight twenty-one per van, or forty-nine thousand six forty-two. The highest bid we received was, was thirty-three thousand five forty-nine. All bids were basically met specifications of, you know, the, the food service vans and the, the details and the loading and the, the, kind of like a cargo van, but, but basically, they, they all met the specs. It's just a, the recommendation here is for lower price.
How close was this, the next bid?
Um, very, very close, six forty-nine, six forty-two. The twenty-four eight twenty-one. The, the another one came in for twenty-five two seventy-eight, and the, another one came in for twenty-five two fifty-two.
Is the second one local?
Uh, they're, they're all local. The, the, let me go, let me just go quickly over these. Heygraph submitted a bid for twenty-five thousand two fifty-one, or two fifty-two apiece. Applegate, twenty-five thousand two seventy-eight, and Paxnu at thirty-three thousand five forty-nine. So...
I'm a little concerned if we have to have a maintenance or anything like that, that you're buying a vehicle from Grand Rapids?
Well, we, we can always give them serve locally as well, and they're generally more than a Chevrolet vehicle.
I know, but if you, I prefer to buy local for one thing. And secondly, if I have two vehicles that come in at the same time, and one of them was purchased from me and the other one's purchased from miles away, who's going to get the better service? The one that I sold.
So what was the next, the next lowest bid?
It was twenty-five two fifty-two times two.
Yeah, the Heygraph, twenty-five two fifty-two. Yeah, the Hank Graff, twenty-five two fifty-two.
Fifty thousand five hundred, I mean, that's just a guess, but.
So, so a little, just, just a hair shy of a thousand dollars extra, but you could buy it locally, so I guess that's the decision you just have.
Well, how are they getting brought here?
Some, uh, probably by delivery, I would imagine.
Oh, wait, no, 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 don't imagine.
No, I, I, no, I, um, you know what, I, some of those are, I can confirm that.
Okay, cause, cause if we have to go pick them up, uh, you know, we don't, and apparently we don't know, so if we have to pay someone to drive over there, you, and crew costs there. And gas.
We have the excess fund balance available to make this purchase in the food service account, so I think the question for you just essentially is, which direction do you wanna go? The next lowest bid would be, uh, you have the name of the?
Yes, Hank Graff is the next lowest one at twenty-five two fifty-two, I, I can confirm, but I would believe on the deliveries, they were all included.
That was twenty-five three fifty-two?
Yeah.
And, and secondly, we get a lot of contributions from local car dealers.
Yes.
And.
I think for nine hundred bucks, I think we stayed locally. We've been approved for forty-nine six forty-two. We have to.
We would simply redo our application, it's literally a twenty-four to forty-eight hour turnaround, so they would, I'm quite confident they're not approved then, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's just a, just a crazy.
So John, can you just one more time make sure we have for the resolution, say the name of the dealership?
Yes, it's, uh, the Hank Graff Chevrolet, uh, the price per vehicle would be twenty-five thousand two fifty, twenty-five thousand two hundred fifty-one dollars and eighty-one cents each, uh, for a total of fifty thousand five oh three sixty-two cents, thirty-two.
So, any other questions?
I just have one more, uh. When we get these things like this, and just for a scenario, does this here, can, can we get the information on what the bids were, who bid what, and everything else? Cause, cause I couldn't care less who got it locally, and no, I don't wanna spend thirty-three thousand dollars instead of twenty-five, but, but I, I do, I do think for the argument over nine hundred dollars, if we go to Duran and ask Hank Graff or something, um, they, they, I know over the years, they've done stuff here for our district, so I really don't know why we wouldn't hit one of these two local dealerships. Cause then you, you know, when you go ask them for favors, but you're gonna drive over to Grand Rapids to buy, buy two vehicles, that's kind of a slap in the face. So whatever we need to do to amend the.
Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to that effect.
So can you?
Sure.
Hank Graff, right?
It would be, be resolved, the Schwartz Creek Community School Board of Education approved the new food delivery vans from Hank Graff Chevrolet for a total cost of fifty thousand five hundred and three dollars and sixty-two cents, that's twenty-five thousand two hundred fifty-one dollars and eighty-one cents each. So moved.
Support.
Stacy and Brian, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, thank you. We have the Leadership Institute, that Ben just explained to us and described and answered our questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the Summer Leadership Institute.
Support.
Stacy and Brian, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Now, can I just ask one quick question on that too? When you come back from that, can you also give a report?
I sure will.
Yes.
I'll even take some pictures for you.
Okay, and now we have an opportunity for public comment, if you'd like to address the board, please stand, state your name, if you'd like, your address, or the reporting secretary, try to keep your comments between minutes or less. Anyone?
Uh, Hocka, Schwartz Creek, I've been here before, here's a carrot, I made notes, so I'll try to be brief this time. In short, um, very disappointed in the piano issue. I'd like to thank Mr. Menka for spending some time with me on the phone during the week. I opened myself to each and every one of you, and none of you, not one of you contacted me with even a question. Couple of concerns that would come straightforward. One of the other bids was for a new instrument, the one you've chosen is twelve years old. The new one has a ten-year warranty, the one you've chosen, at best, may have a three-year warranty. You mentioned not willing to, be willing to spend thirty-three thousand dollars on a vehicle, but certainly twenty-five, there's about a, you know, eight thousand dollar point spread. The new piano versus the one you've selected is over a nine thousand dollar point spread, with the new one being the lower amount. An unbiased expert, I don't know the man, I know of the man, I hear he's very qualified, I certainly respect him as I do Mr. Luke and Mr. Martin. But I find it odd that he already does the work for the district. That is not exactly what I would consider unbiased, I don't consider it completely spoiled and tainted, I don't say that man can't be independent and objective, cause I'm sure he probably can. But I mentioned the sniff test last time. I also find it, um, interesting that Steinway was held up as the bar. The new piano, it's nine thousand dollars less, has the same action as a Steinway. Mr. Martin, et cetera, anything to do with the piano, has left early again tonight, because the decision that he is interested in having reached, was reached. He also left the last meeting early after having said his piece before I said anything. So, just very disappointed, you will do what you will do, you have done what you've done, whether it can be undone or not, I don't know, but as a matter of record, I think you missed the mark. I'm not gonna say you didn't hit the target, but I don't think it was a bullseye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, may I ask you a question?
Yes.
Um, I don't know about anybody else, but I did not get anything from you as far as us to contact you, when did you do that?
I turned it in with a yellow card and I verbally stated in front of all of you publicly.
Wouldn't have known how to get ahold of you, so I just wanted to state that, that I didn't get an email or anything from you, so.
Okay.
I just was wondering how you did that.
If it makes a difference, it's there now and.
I was just wondering how you did that, cause I didn't receive anything.
Standing right about here.
Did, did you or the people that you work for, or however, did you guys have a piano on this list?
Yes.
Okay, and I, and I'll just speak for myself, I can't speak for the other six, but I would've never contacted you no matter what, because if I can't contact the rest of those people and have a conversation, I don't think that's fair to them, I think it would be very inappropriate on my part. Because I loved what you had to say two weeks ago, and I think you got this entire board's attention, and I think over the last two weeks, everyone's done due diligence, and, and maybe we did miss something, maybe we didn't, I don't know, but, but I don't think it would be appropriate for me to contact you when you have something on that sheet. Now, if you would've just been considered an outside expert that didn't have anything at state here, that would be very different, but that wasn't the case, so I, I think that would've been very inappropriate for any of us, but I can only speak for me, so no, I, it.
Yeah.
That's why, and I, I was under that understanding, but that's why I did not make any attempt to call you or anyone else there. You know, the bids were made, everything was put out there, it was put out inaccurately, that goes back to our central office, but I don't know that it was.
Right.
But I mean, I don't, I don't think it would be appropriate for us to contact someone that has their name in, in that bid process.
Oh, my name's not on the bid or anything?
No, but, but you understand what I'm saying.
Yeah.
I mean, no different than right now, I wouldn't have called Hank Graff, I wouldn't have contacted Hank Graff Chevrolet about that van either.
Why not?
Because we put a criteria out there.
Right.
If that criteria was met.
Okay.
Whether it's a van or a truck or anything else, then either we didn't put enough out there to get good information back, which is shame on us, or we got the information we were happy with.
Okay.
And we read it, and then we made a decision accordingly, but I don't think it would be, I, I, it was when I sat here two weeks ago, I had a problem with how this whole conversation went up here at this board table, and I had to get some questions answered for me, and after I got them answered, I was okay with them.
And how did you get them answered?
That's irrelevant. I go to my fearless leader here. I, I, you know, I mean, we hired him, we have to trust him, you know, and I haven't caught him lying to me yet.
Okay.
So, I mean, I, I have to trust him, we hired him to run the district, here we are.
Just so you know, on the bid that was put out on the Buy For Michigan site, it was, I don't know, fifteen or twenty bullet points. Almost to a fault, the piano that we submitted met or exceeded, and the one or two items where it didn't, I was told that there's not a piano on the planet that could possibly meet everything on the list. And just, you know, new, used, more money, less money, warranty, less warranty, those kinds of things, and, and there's, there's more at play.
Okay, I just wanted to address your question about contacting you, I, I would've found it to be very inappropriate on my part, so, but thank you.
Well, I don't think it would be a problem as long as all of the people had this collective information.
Right, if we all would have been in on it, yes.
You don't, you don't.
Right.
And what our conversation would've been, would've been different than what you and Tony or you and Lorraine or you and Brian would've had, cause there's no way we've all had the same conversation.
No, so we really wouldn't have gone together.
And so I mean, that, that's why I think that would be very inappropriate on our part.
And you would be free to bring me up from the audience as you did Mr. Martin or any of the others.
Mr. Martin works for us.
With those questions.
Mr. Martin works for us.
Right.
And, and, and I sat right here last, two weeks ago, and I made the comment, Mr. Martin made the comment himself, man, I learned a lot about pianos, that tells me Mr. Martin didn't know probably what he should in doing that.
Right.
And that's where I was left with a problem two weeks ago, that problem was solved by, by Ben, so, but, but thank you, and like I said, I just wanted to address that because I would never contact anybody on this list, so don't be offended from me.
I'm good.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good.
Yes, thank you, Brian, appreciate it.
Anyone else? No. Okay, alright, thank you. Alright, comments and questions from the board?
I have a couple. First off, I would just like to say thank you, uh, to Ben, it is so nice to have questions answered, and I, I appreciate that, not only ours, but also the public questions.
My pleasure, thank you.
Thank you. Another thought I had riding in today, with the consolidation of the Schwartz Creek and the Monkey Township Police Departments, does that do anything for our school liaison officer? And, uh, maybe we should look at that closely, and maybe we have some alternative things that we can look at.
That is a great question, and I will get you, uh, good information, so, because what I'm gonna tell you right now is probably not the full picture, um, I have met with the chief and the sergeant, Sergeant Bade, who is the sergeant?
Lieutenant Bade.
Lieutenant Bade, I'm sorry, I don't wanna say the wrong rank, so, Lieutenant Bade and the chief, I met with both of them, and, uh, we have been looking at a, a contract for our school liaison officer, which mirrors everything that we've had before. What we, uh, what we do know is that there's different service levels as a result of having the consolidation, uh, there's obviously some disagreement on whether it was a good thing or not a good thing, um, but I will get information about specifically what that relationship does to impact our, uh, contract with the school liaison officer. Yeah.
Anything else?
I have a question, with the pastors, um, and the meeting and everything, um, is there ever an opportunity, like, say there is a crisis, would you call them in? Would you do anything in that manner, or will we not even go to that?
Well, we obviously have to be somewhat careful, you know, with our, you know, with the legal thing, but I think that, uh, that's an idea, that if you're gonna be able to go, or if you're not able to go, you could get to me, that I think, I'm hoping, that they or we, those of us that are there together to think and brainstorm, could, could put out there.
I just wonder, cause Davis and School does that, and I was just wondering if that was a thought, I wasn't sure how we can handle that.
For sure.
We have con, Derek has a crisis team, and then he has contacts with.
Oh, good.
Local support on there.
And we might be able to expand it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could, okay, great.
Could that be your?
It'll be at the Valley Coney Island.
Ben's buying.
That's right.
That's what I heard, I don't know.
What'd he say, is his favorite?
It's, I'm buying, it's a buffet.
He said he's making more money now, he can buy lots.
Anyone else?
Hold on, hold on, just a quick comment, uh, so tomorrow, the prayer breakfast with the Kiwanis, Metis Church is what time?
Seven thirty.
And we can buy tickets at the store, ten dollars apiece.
Correct.
Oh, okay, I missed that one.
And there's gonna be an extra keyboard, Sarah, that played with a lot of famous national groups.
And how long does it last, just because I do?
Hour, hour fifteen minutes.
Okay.
So I want, I still, even though he's not here, I wanna thank Mr. Peters again for coming, because I really have heard a lot about him over the years, um, as being the party who sends us the packets, and it's nice to actually have an opportunity.
Well, and it was good for you to be able to discuss that, because now I can get you those forms like that.
Well, color code, that's, I mean, that's, oh, very much so.
Cause then you're not siphoning, you're sifting through everything to get the, to get the punch at work.
Well, I, I think that top yellow page will probably be.
The glow.
Yeah.
Yes.
That'll help tremendously to get, why did we get here?
Right.
Um, I, I have two things, um, can you look into, um, a discipline for expulsion hearings? What, the, what, the, uh, school board conference, Brad, Brad from M A S B did a thing, and could you verify a timeline and how long we should have before we get to the actual expulsion hearing?
Yes.
And then, um, a couple of weeks, I think it was, I don't know, it was two board meetings ago or the last one, we got this, and you said you, you were gonna get some better information on it from the back?
Oh, uh, yeah, I had that at, at either our last meeting or in the meeting before, I can dig that back up, but I haven't.
That's better than this?
Yes.
Oh, okay, never seen.
It's got like colors and graphs and stuff on it.
We'll make sure.
So.
Yes, if you can.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody else, last call? Alright, with that, Walter, thank you so much, everybody.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, no, no.
And I didn't want.
I'll give him a stand. Cause he didn't get a copy either.
My bad, jeez.
I, I cannot go to where I'm at, unfortunately.
Well, but everything is, it'd be nice if we sung all the bids, because I mean, I think, you and.